Natasha, you ready? I have, I've got six thirty eight P M. Six thirty eight P M. Agenda. Special meeting. City of Dilly, City Council, October the fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Dilly, Texas, will conduct a special meeting on Tuesday, October the fifteenth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P M. At City Hall Convention Center Building located at one sixteen East Miller, Dilly, Texas, seven eight oh one seven. The following items to be considered. One, call meeting to order. Number two, roll call, please, starting with Ms. Rodriguez.
Nina Rodriguez, place one.
Ray Aranda, place two.
Alyssa Machado, place three.
Alexandria Inocentio, council member, place four.
City Secretary Natasha Prado.
Henrietta Arrendondo, city administrator.
Molly Solis, city attorney.
Marian Obrigón, mayor. Thank you. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance to the United States and Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item number four, invocation by Mr. Arrendondo.
As we gather here tonight in the City of Dilly, Texas, we are grateful for the opportunity to come together as a community. We invoke the spirit of wisdom and understanding to guide our deliberations during this council meeting. May we approach our discussions with open hearts and minds, seeking the betterment of our city and its residents. Let us remember the responsibilities entrusted to us as stewards of this community, and may we make decisions that reflect integrity, fairness, and compassion. As we address the issues before us, may we be mindful of the diverse needs and perspectives of all our citizens striving to create a city that is inclusive and supportive of every individual. In times of disagreement, may we find common ground and work together toward solutions that benefit the greater good of Dilly. May this meeting be conducted with civility, respect, and commitment to collaboration. We ask for blessings upon the gathering and upon the City of Dilly, Texas. Amen.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, citizens to be heard. This is the opportunity for citizens, visitors, and guests to address the City Council on any issue or any item of the agenda. In compliance with L G C section five five one point zero zero seven, City Council may not discuss any presented issue nor may any action be taken on any issue at this time. Citizens to be heard are limited to three minutes each. Attorney General opinion dash J C dash zero one six nine one, not nine. Thank you. Do we do it now or after? De son primero, eh? Are we ready right now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. With us tonight, we have Mr. Álvarez. With a time of six forty-two. Okay. On the, under citizens to be heard, we have a signing sheet for citizens to be heard, special council meeting, October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Mr. Everardo Castillo Junior. He is one citizen to be heard.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Mr. Arrendondo, Ms. Prado, Ms. Solis. My name is Everardo Castillo Junior, and I had spoken with Mr. Arrendondo a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was September twenty-third or twenty-fourth, asking him about a grievance that I have due to a violation of one of the ordinances that happened around that time. And I had asked him if he could handle it before this meeting happened, but of course, I understand y'all, y'all were away last week, and he was away for mostly the whole week as well, and he was unable to do it. But I'm here to, to just ask if I'm able to be a part of the agenda for next month, and so I could speak more elaborate about the, about my grievance that I have with the ordinance, if I'm able to get put on the Sep, I mean, November twelfth meeting, regular meeting, if possible, so I could go more in depth in the, and what, what I want to talk about more with you guys. But I came here just to inform you so it could be in the minutes, and just to let y'all know, you know, what's going on a little bit. That's, that's it. But thank y'all for, for y'all's time and for everything y'all are doing, you know, it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The time is six forty-four. All right. Moving on to item number six, consent agenda discussed, consider enacted on the following item, items. A, approved minutes of the September third, twenty twenty four, special meeting, September tenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to clarify that there will be a correction that will be needing to do on the minutes on, for Sep, regular meeting, September tenth, and it will be on thirteen and fourteen in regards to that thirteen was motion made by Mayor Protem Alexandria Inocentio to table. I just put motion, and, and I forgot to put motion to table, and correction number fourteen will be motion to go out for the R F Qs for financial auditors, as discussed on the last meeting. And then also on eighteen, it was as presented, financial report as presented. I, I guess I was thinking of twenty-five when I put twenty-five on item eighteen. So those will be with those corrections.
Okay. If not, may I move on? Moving on to, to item B.
So are we doing all of them together or separate?
She just opened A.
Just opened.
Okay. So let me, let's finish, let's finish A. If there's no further question on item A, I move that we approve the minutes for September third as presented with corrections for September the tenth for items thirteen, fourteen, and eighteen as presented by City Secretary.
Okay, motion made by, motion made by Mr. Álvarez. Aranda, second, please.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving, thank you. Moving on to B, review of city bills. Anything from council?
We go to both veterinarians to euthanize the animals, Pierceau and Michael.
We go to both veterinarians to have the dog.
It depends if Pierceau can't take them, then he'll try Dilly. It just depends on who can take, who can take the animals.
You've got two bills. You've got one from Dilly and one from Pierceau.
Yes.
So do we do, how many dogs do we do, or cats, or what, you know?
No, I don't have that. It would be in the Public Works Report in regards to the A C O.
I'm gonna say that I had been there, and I didn't see any cats. He had dogs only, but.
He does utilize both.
Yes.
Both places.
He'll do both.
For the Republic Services, look, I'm sorry. For the Republic Services, what Saturday does this include in the billing? Does it include up to August, or?
It will include. That does not, that does not include the Saturdays. It's a regular billing for residential, commercial, and T D C J services, which I can show you on the desk. It doesn't have such a Saturday.
No Saturday.
Are we good? Mayor, if there's no further questions, I move that we approve the city bills for the month of September twenty twenty four as presented.
Okay, any questions? Okay, then we approve of, motion made by Mr. Aranda, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Machado, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, what else do we have? Um, I don't have.
It's right here, ma'am.
Mayor, we have three incentives.
The approval of employee incentives for the month of September twenty twenty four.
These are all certificates?
Yes, we have.
Two of them have not gone, two of them would be for the code compliance, the training, and they have not gone yet for their testing yet.
And then the two that, that we have here, it's a Texas A and M Engineering Extension Service, the Texas A and M University System, Francisca I Ochoa, completed basic code enforcement of thirty-six hours, September thirtieth through October the fourth, twenty twenty four, continuing education units, earned three point six hours. And then we have same for Texas A and M Engineer and Extension Service, the Texas A and M University System, John C. Cruz, successfully completed basic code enforcement, thirty-six hours, September thirtieth through October fourth, twenty twenty four, continuing education unit earned three point six hours.
So, I do have a question. So you're saying that Francisca and John attended the course, they're gonna test to get a license, is that my understanding?
Yes. Yes. And then we have, you have, Mr.?
Yes.
Arrendondo?
And how much of, remind me again, the incentive amount?
The incentive for the train, the training certificate is a hundred, licensing is a thousand, because they got bumped from five to a thousand.
And the reason for that, we had hired an individual specifically for that, but then we had turnover, so that leaves us with, you know, nobody, so we're kinda trying to get a couple of other people, like, develop, yeah, develop so that we don't skip a beat on that.
It's good?
Okay, then there's another one here with public funds, Investment Act Training, North Central Texas Council of Governments and Government Treasures Organization of Texas Certificate of Attendance, Henry Arrendondo, September eleventh, twenty twenty four, five hours, September the twelfth, twenty twenty four, five hours. Congratulations. We have the instructor Patrick Chingle and sponsor number zero one zero one seven four. Congratulations.
A motion that we approve, they presented employee incentive for the month of September?
Motion made by Ms. Arrendondo, approval of employee incentives for the month of September twenty twenty four, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Machado, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on, department reports submitted for informational purposes only. We have A, library report, B, court report, C, City Secretary report, D, City Administrator report, oral, Police Department report, Public Works Department report, and Engineering report. That was by Armando and Manuel. Okay, council?
Mayor and Council, the librarian was not in today, so she will not be in to present her report.
She's right here. Anything else?
I do, under the City Secretary report, I would like to inform y'all of the events that are coming up. Tomorrow, there is a homecoming parade. I was unsure if y'all are wanting to be part of it.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yes, at six. We can have one of the Public Works drive y'all in the parade. So it's up to y'all if y'all would want to participate or not.
What time would this start?
This will be at, it starts at six thirty, lineup is at five thirty.
So there'll be a vehicle, and if we show up, we can?
We can, well, if not, no one's gonna participate, then I don't want to send a vehicle if no one's gonna participate. So if, if there is gonna be participation, so I can have a vehicle out there, make the arrangements with Rudy to have one of the guys out there for y'all. I know that.
Do we have any, any vehicles in the parade?
No, not, not for this one.
What was your question?
If we have any vehicles, anybody, any?
Any vehicles, the city, you know?
I do, I, but this was, this was, I guess, for December when Freddie said whenever, if we needed a float to let him know, but it's kinda late.
Well, not a float, but just, you know, give a shower to one of the trucks and just be in the parade.
How many, how many council members?
Well, and what he's saying is just to have the city present, being present for it, doesn't matter if anybody gets on.
No, I know, but it says who would be wanting.
If anybody wants to, um, join y'all, we just started together.
I'll go whichever way is decided.
I'm so sorry.
So, well, now that we don't have, suffer all with the vehicles.
I guess we'll let you know by the end of the night.
Okay. And then we also have where the trucker tree will be moved from the thirty-first to the thirtieth from six to nine P M. And then, as well as trick-or-treating will be from five to nine the following day. That's what the chief gave the okay for, from trick-or-treating from five to nine.
And, and this year, it, it won't be indoor, right? We're gonna have it outside?
This year, we have it outside in this side of the parking lot, but it also depends on the weather, because last year, that's the reason why we had it inside, was because of the weather. So if all weather is good, then we should have it outside.
Okay, we also have the Veterans Day coming up before.
Yes, we do have the Veterans Breakfast. That is going to be before the next meeting. That will be on November ninth. That is, it's usually on a Saturday.
The what breakfast?
The Veterans Breakfast.
Oh, the Veterans Breakfast.
Yes.
So we're not gonna do it on that day?
No, we usually do it on a Saturday. And I, this year, I will be working with Chris Ramírez from the Veterans Office with, at the county. He's, he has listings of the retired force, retired people from Dilly, Pierceau, and I think Tula, I believe.
That, that, that would be very nice if we could attend, out of all respect.
Has the school district officially invited us to their?
Yes, I did speak to Kelly today in regards to the ribbon cutting. It'll be ten twenty-three, and she said that she would love to have y'all there, present, that y'all will get a tour. School Board will be there. And it will be from, she says she'll give me the time to have everybody out there. But she does, she would like to have the opportunity for y'all to come and participate.
From the twenty-third?
Yes.
Anything else, council?
That is it for, I have for the trick-or-treat, the trunk or treat Halloween and Veterans Breakfast and ribbon cutting. That is all I have right now.
Okay, for the city administrator, I'll just go real quick. We have the insurance consultant, Scott Villarreal, met with the employees for the dental envision, because that was gonna start on October the first. This was mid-September. We were partnering with Frio County on the mitigation plan. Every five years has to be updated, so we're going back and forth as they request information. The First State Bank, and I think I had discussed this with you, Christine Long, she's the vice president, she asked for the collateral changes, since we're not receiving the money from the core civic anymore, so that takes our balances lower, and they don't have to cover that, so she asked for an adjustment to that. We did have a meeting with the group from Texas A and M and USDA representative. It's kinda in development, some programs that we could have the potential to participate. First, it was focused more kinda like on housing, development of housing, so I'll keep you updated on that as there's more. This was with Alan Lambright, who's with the Texas Single Family Housing Program Director, and there's a potential for us to collaborate with them. The Republic Services brush bulk pickup, we posted that, we've advertised that, that's the week of October the twenty-eighth, so it's coming up. We've also been working with T C Q on the C S E P applications with the, there's the amended permits that have to be approved for the, the new sewer treatment plant that we're working on for the, for the prison. Also been working with Stephanie Medlin, she's a program supervisor for the utilities for the T D C J, and she's following up on the M O U. And so that's been every week, follow-up, and now that's on, the M O U's with CFO, so he's just, you know, reviewing, asking whatever questions he has. We had a meeting today at the ACOG in regards to a Texas C D B G grant. We did, we are receiving the five hundred thousand dollars for. This is for the. Water plant improvement project. It's five hundred thousand dollars. The recommended match that council approved was twenty-five thousand. I did meet with the specialists, and I asked them if we could provide in-kind instead of giving all the twenty-five thousand, and he said yes. So we'll work with our engineers to see how much in-kind we can contribute. He said it could be, you know, some employees from the treatment plant, it could be equipment, it could be all the land there belongs to the City of Dilly, so, you know, it could be some, so he said before you move on that, just, you need to fill out a certain form, get with your engineers, and see how much of this twenty-five can be paid in-kind. Okay, so he said we could do that, so it's a good thing? So that's, that's a five hundred thousand dollar grant from Texas C D B G, and it is for deteriorated components at the water treatment plant. It is to replace one aerator and expand the clearwell capacity, and upgrade the variable frequency drive to existing pumps, permanently install the generator, the auto transfer switch, and all associated opportunuses at the Civic Center water well. That's it. And that, the, treated Dilly won't have to pay anything for the engineering or the grant administration. And that was today. Jane Martinez, she's a PhD, she's project manager for Texas Water Development Board, City of Dilly Project seven three nine one zero, which is the Briscoe Sewer Treatment Plant. She has approved the engineering feasibility report. Okay, so these are steps that have to be taken, and she's approved the report.
Good.
We are gonna be meeting with the Texas Department of Agriculture on Main Street rehabilitation sidewalks, so that was, remember, we applied for that grant that was unfunded, but it's gonna be coming up again. Just so that you're aware.
Maybe now we can get those sidewalks we've been talking for so long.
So there's, there's an item on the agenda, and this is gonna be related to the Texas Community Development Grand Fund, the deadline, the community application is to be submitted between September and December the ninth of this year. The project application, if you're, if we're accepted, it'll be between January and June of twenty twenty-five. The twenty twenty-five, so that's for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Community Development Fund. The twenty twenty-five Downtown Revitalization Program is approximate, it's, we need to submit the community application between January and March of twenty twenty-five, so that'll be coming up. And then the project application will be due spring, summer, twenty twenty-five. And what it is, is we asked council for. And what it is, is we ask council for permission to apply. If council approves, then we submit, it's kinda like tentative application. They review it, and if we qualify, we get accepted, then we go to the more...
Intense.
Yeah, intense application, and then once that is reviewed, and let's say it's approved, then we go out for bids to hire a grant administrator, grant, the project engineer, and all that kinda stuff. And that's all I have.
Good. What about the restroom?
The restrooms, so that, what's the latest on the restrooms? There's a punch list?
Still working, still working on the final punch list.
On the what, Rudy?
For the last three, four months?
Final stuff on the restroom, so you let them know and get a, did a punch list, and now they gotta finish all that before we officially close.
They're done, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're done. We use them on the night out.
There's this final punch list, they're not done.
They're not done? So we're gonna collect a fee for every day from that June date to the date that they...
Yeah, they have, yeah, they have to go through all that.
Will there be, will there be anything left over?
That's a long time.
Because this is basically the same, this is basically the same thing we've heard for the last three months.
Cuatro meses.
At least three, three months, maybe more. They're, they're close to finishing.
That's enough.
We'll be lucky if they're only a year behind.
I do have a que, in reference to the restrooms, do we as a city have a plan on how we're gonna monitor those restrooms as far as opening them, closing them, and ensuring that they remain clean during the day and during the weekend?
So that'll be the park's responsibility, there's a crew that does that. Rudy and I had talked, it was a good suggestion, let's say like at 10 o'clock, just lock the doors, you know, or 9 o'clock, whatever time they're making the round, the rounds.
And so they'll be locked at night.
I would say it would be, it would be a good idea.
We can close the whole park.
As long as they're available during the day.
So actually, we're looking at, they're, they're gonna be open every day.
They should be.
Regardless, if we have something or not, but make sure that who is in charge of the parks take the responsibility of making sure they're clean and locked.
We need to ensure that whoever's on call cleans them at 8 o'clock in the morning, is there midday, and is cleaning them at the end of the day. They need to remain clean at all times.
And not so much that, but we don't want any vandalism or anything, we need to be monitoring them throughout.
They already tried to tag it.
Oh my God. Can we have a camera?
Yeah, we can, that's, that's gonna happen. Can't prevent that, but we can come back and clean it, and keep doing it, we keep doing it too.
Okay.
Even the park, it just needs a lot of work. It needs to be cleaned. We just need to keep up with it, we're not keeping up with it. That's the only park we have, and there's a lot of stuff we can do, and we're just not doing it.
The trash issue is a problem.
Yeah, right, that's a big part of having it.
They use the facility, the trash cans right there, but they leave everything over here.
Well, what we need to do is order trash cans that are not gonna flip over, that the dogs aren't gonna, we need to start by buying trash cans that are appropriate for the park, so that they won't be flipped over by dogs. That's a start, but it just, we just need to keep up with it.
Do we, do we have, do we have the boys coming out more often to play basketball? Because that's what they were waiting for.
They leave all the water bottles on the court, and the trash cans right there. We need to stay on it, that's all we can do.
Yeah, that's all. Okay. All right, let's move on. Number nine, right?
Number eight.
Number eight.
I just wanted to bring up on the public works, we had a pump, we call it a low-service pump at the water plant. It went out on us, it's normal wear and tear. It pumps the water from the clearwell to the ground storage. Anyway, it went down, we pulled it out, it wasn't repairable, we had to buy a new pump, and it's already back in service. We put it back in there, so just to let you all know, it'll be like $15,000, or next, next month's bill, so.
There was a bill for $19,000 for...
Yeah, that one was a pump that we have to replace at the sewage plant.
At the sewage plant?
Yeah. What happens is our original pumps are obsolete, they don't sell parts for them, and we have to replace them. And those things ain't, ain't cheap.
I know.
I just wanted to point out you found that pump, so, but everything's back in service at the plant.
Thank you, Rudy. All right, moving on to item number nine. I mean, eight. Presentation and Discuss TCAP Award was presented by Margaret Summery.
Hey, so Mayor and Council, we had a visit from the executive director, Margaret Summery, and we actually went to her reception. It was in front of the, in front of the hotel, they had like a, like a park in the, in the middle of the place, so they sponsored the reception at the TML Conference. She wrote this, "Mayor and City Council of City of Dilly, in 2001, the City of Dilly passed a resolution to join with other cities, working together for the benefit of all, to form the South Texas Aggregation Project staff, to help cities save money on electric bills." Fast forward, and the South Texas Aggregation Project and the city's aggregation power project merged and became TCAP in 2011, with the same purpose, find energy rates that saves its members' money and in turn saves tax dollars. With 164 members, TCAP is the largest organization of its kind in Texas. "We want to thank our founding members, those members that were there from the start, City of Dilly, and who have continued to be the leaders in working together for savings. On behalf of the Board of Directors and myself, I want to present this to the City of Dilly as a thank you for your membership in the Texas Coalition for Affordable Power. Signed, Margaret Summery, Executive Director."
Okay.
So here's still work.
And here's still work there.
Okay, moving on to item nine. Presentation on Options for Maintaining the City of Dilly Natural Gas Utility as Set by Simon or Simone Benya, Natural Gas Consultant.
So Mayor and Council, we asked for this to be tabled, Simon was not ready with the presentation, and so this item and the next one would be taped.
Okay, table.
May I move that we table item, item nine and item 11?
I think it's supposed to be 10.
Yeah, it's supposed to be 10.
Nine and 10?
Nine and 11.
Okay, you want me to?
We're gonna table item nine and 11.
As well as I don't see it, leave it as 11?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, table 10 also. Cover all the bases.
Nine through 11.
Motion, give me a motion please, on table nine and 11. Motion.
My second.
Juanita, motion?
Aranda.
Can I say it's a second?
Aranda, second, by, almost everyone say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving to item 11.
Twelve.
Twelve, I'm sorry. Discuss Consider Act on Revising the Bank Signature Card with First State Bank, Louis to Update Authorized Signature.
So Mayor and Council, we took Natasha to the bank to get on the signature card. However, they did research, and they did not have the previous city secretary in their minutes to remove, right? So, you know, her, her token was disabled, and all that was done, but they want it reflected in the minutes that you authorized to remove that, and that's why we're here. And they didn't wanna add Natasha until that's done, so.
Okay. Motion to remove?
Yes.
One second.
Isn't it supposed to be a res...
No, they just, they requested the, just the minutes.
They can't go random minutes, but it's better if there's a resolution, but they, if they only request the minutes, some things want the resolution.
So we have motion to remove Juanita?
Yes.
Yes.
And to approve Natasha for the, on the signature, for all the accounts of the, all the city accounts.
Okay, so I'm asking for a motion.
A motion that we remove Ms. Juanita Fonseca from all bank signature cards with First State Bank Louise and replace with Natasha, Natasha Prado? Our city secretary.
Okay.
My second.
Motion, second, oh, motion by Noensio, second by Ms. Machado? Moving, everyone say aye?
Aye.
You opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item 13, Discuss Consider Act on RFQ for auditing services for FY 2023- 2024.
Mayor and Council, at the previous meeting, you directed us to go out for RFQs. We posted in the San Antonio Express on two different weeks, and also in the, the current. And these are, today was the deadline to receive RFQs, and Natasha's handing out what we received.
Did the...
There's a firm of CPAs, and I mean, of auditing firm, I mean, Pierceau, they're, they're based in San Antonio, but they have an office in Pierceau, and they do audits for cities and schools and, of course, counties. I wonder why they didn't apply, I mean, submit it?
My first question is, who did last year's audit?
So last year was Armstrong, Von, and Associates.
Okay.
So they didn't, they didn't submit a...
Yeah, they did.
Based on that alone, I would recommend that we go with Garza and Gonzalez. Simply because it's the checks and balances, it just, it gives you a different perspective on the city finances, different agency to review, and just give you a different outlook on the overall.
Yes, we've had the same auditor for some time.
They did it last year.
I have personally worked with Garza Gonzalez and Associates, Mr. Eli Mendoza, he used to be in charge of doing the, the audits for Pierceau, the city of Pierceau, and they did good work. Do we need to go through the motion of evaluation?
Yes.
Basically the same thing, although the ones I've ever always seen, they, I mean, for the references and the, the number of clients they have, but... Do we need to go through the...
Motion.
Through the motions of...
Evaluating.
The evaluation? No?
I mean, my thing is, we already know that we want, we need to make the change just for checks and balances and...
Exactly, I think the whole purpose of going through our RFQs was to seek a company other than what we already had.
Right.
Not that there was anything wrong with them, it's just, just to like get something different.
Yeah.
What you need to do is review and make sure they both have the qualifications that you require, and make that as part of your consideration, is that both are qualified when you're opting to go with, like you just said.
Mr. Aranda, have you looked over the proposals?
No, I just got them right now, but I worked with both firms, most recent is Armstrong with, you know, helping us here, and in 1998, I was the chief accountant for the City of Dilly, I mean, Dilly Del Rio, and I, that's where I met Eli Mendoza in 1998, so I worked with both.
Well, like I said, you know, there's really very little difference between the proposals, except, you know, maybe the list of clients. But so, if we don't need to go step by step on the, on the evaluations, then we can just go through what we, we want.
We need to put it into motion.
You just need to make sure that they comply with the RFQ, that they've been submitted and compliance with the RFQ, and that they're qualified.
But there's no way we can go through this, you know, on both of them.
You're forgetting to use your mic.
But they, you know, if we looked over, they, they usually have a list of clients, and so they've done, these people have done work for, for many cities and counties and...
Yeah, we just, we did request for qualifications.
Did you check the suggestions or submissions from the county, that all the criteria for the RFQ packet?
I had barely opened Armstrong right before the meeting for council to review.
Do we need, do we need to make a decision tonight on this?
Well, I think we should, if we don't have to, if, you know, like I said, you...
Do City of Pierceau, City of San Antonio?
Who's gonna go through all of this and read? And even make sense of it? So if we can, let's just, we know what we want, we know what we don't want.
Yes. Yes, we do need a motion.
May I move that we select Garcia and Gonzalez and Associates as the auditing, for auditing services for fiscal year 2023 through 2024?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Aranda, motion on Garza, Gonzalez, and Associates LLC. Certified Public Accountant, second.
My second.
Second by Mr. Alvaro Solimpe, may I say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We need to contact them soon so they can schedule us. They probably already have a.
I'll call, I'll call tomorrow.
All right, moving on to item number 14. Discuss Consider Act on Resolution Number 24-15-10. "A resolution of the City Council of the City of Dilly, Texas, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund."
So, Mayor and Council, this is a $750,000 Texas City BG grant for the following year, as I had discussed before. And in order for us to get the most points, it is advised that we commit to $37,500 of match. If, you know, we get awarded later, we can determine what can be in kind and what cannot be in kind. And then also, this is kind of like for the preliminary. Later on, if we get invited, then we'll have our public hearings, come to council with the proposed project, whether it be water systems, whether it be streets, what have you. And you'll have the, the, review those suggestions and then approve.
At this time, we're not designating them, okay?
No, we're not designating.
Yeah, as we all know, that's about the only way we can make capital improvements is through grants.
So this, this is just like the community preliminary application. And then if we get passed to the next stage, then we'll do all the more formal things, the public hearings and all that. It seems like they're trying to streamline the process so that they don't get bogged down with everybody's technical stuff. And then it takes a lot longer to, to approve.
It also states here that we have 51% of grant funds for activities identified by the state planning region as, as first priority. The city committees dedicate no less than 51%. Do you have any idea how much that's going to be?
No, so at, at the meeting today, they had, like, of course, water system improvement, streets, sidewalks. They had like, like seven common areas where they're focusing more on that, that is common to all the, the cities that apply.
We need work on all of those.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, so they want you, you know, later, they'll want you to commit to say, okay, 51% is going to go to this. Okay, and then you have to agree, yes, we'll do that.
But this is something else, is that the, the projects as grant funds for activities identified by the state planning region, as first priority.
They're going to identify, and this fund, 51% has to be used for what they're going to identify.
Yeah.
Oh, committees dedicating the, the grant funds. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we need a motion.
Mayor, there's no further question. I move that we approve Resolution Number 24-15-10. "A resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dilly, Texas, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, application to the state of Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund."
A motion made by Mr. Aranda. On the Resolution Number 24-15-10, and stated second by Nelda Rodriguez, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, this is all for the open session. We go into 15. Item 15, executive session called pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Subchapter D, Sections 551.071. Consultations with Attorney and 551.074. Personnel matters to discuss and consider the following items. Item or items. A annexation matter. This time with 7:33, close the open session and go into, close. 7:33. Okay, with a time of 8:12, back into session. Okay. Open session, take action on items discussed in executive session. Motion.
May I move that we take no action on? Item 17.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Aranda to take no action on item 17.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Machado, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Again, motion carries. Meeting is over at 8:12.
I motion that we adjourn?
I second.
Adjourn meeting. No, essential, second by Aranda. At it.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Action carries, good night.